I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January ninth, and the time is six fifteen P M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Okay, Dr. Hellman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file for this evening, including several appointments, or a couple of appointments, several increases, decreases, changes in assignment. And there are several retirement and recognitions. We also do have an additional item for individual action. This is a resolution of the school board supporting a Form B one application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. This is something that the board has done in the past. And but it does need to be a resolution, and we're recommending that this be item seven A. As opposed to seven B normally when we do the table file, whatever we add, but we'd like to have this go just before the appointment of the temporary board replacement. So I'd recommend that you adopt that with as seven A. And then finally, we do have a copy of the January twenty-three enrollment report. So that is the table file for this evening.
Okay, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? By Cory, I need a second. Second by Jenny, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. We now move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, so that we will go on to item four. We do not have anybody signed up for public comment. And it is announcements and recognitions.
Yes, I have two announcements this evening. First, we want the community to be aware of a mental health presentation that is taking place at Northfield Middle School. And so this is something that's called the Duck Cup Memorial. The Duck Cup Memorial is a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to providing resources for mental health awareness and suicide prevention. Students in grades six through eight will have an opportunity to listen to Mallory, a mental health advocate sponsored by the Duck Cup Memorial on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. The Duck Cup Memorial sponsors events that reach over thirty thousand students, parents, teachers, and community members on an annual basis. So this is something that we know began in an adjacent community. We're really thrilled to have their skill at our middle school with this presentation in February. And then the second item that I just want to share is I just want to announce that we did Northfield Public Schools in partnership with the Northfield Police Department, we hosted for the police department, a multi-agency crisis event training this past Saturday. And so it did take place at Northfield Middle School. The Northfield Police Department was the convener of the event. Joint services such as local E M Ts, fire, rescue, and law enforcement agencies attended the event. These were law enforcement and E M T and fire agencies from throughout southeast Minnesota. So there were a number of different jurisdictions that were represented. Those agencies had a day where they had some classroom instruction about responding to hostile events, including what we all would never want to think would happen, including an active shooter circumstance. They had an opportunity for that classroom instruction, and then there was an opportunity for several drills to be conducted. It was conducted on a Saturday. Just to be very clear, this was not conducted on a school day, and those agencies did practice response to those kinds of events. The school was closed during the training. There was a huge sign right in front of the school saying, don't come in. There's an emergency training. I attended the event, a very significant amount of safety procedures that were taken place, including checking every individual in. The content was excellent. We can feel really good about the proactive nature of our regional law enforcement and other first responders to make sure that they are aligning their services for events that we hope obviously never take place. But I really appreciate Chief Elliott Thad Monroe from the Police Department who organized this along with Brian Edwards from EMS and Tom Nelson from the Northfield Fire Department. Just really an excellent training for our local first responders, just again to be prepared for circumstances that we just hope never happen. And I do think that the event shows the district's commitment to partnerships. And we're really grateful for the Police Department and other first responders proactive training. So we thank everyone for understanding and staying away from the middle school on Saturday. That was important so they can conduct their training.
Thanks, thank you.
Those are the announcements I have this evening.
Okay, any other announcements from the board members? Okay, I would like to repeat the exciting news that Dr. Hellman has been named one of four finalists for the twenty twenty-three National Superintendent, National Superintendent of the Year by School Superintendents Association. He is invited to Washington D C later this week and San Antonio, Texas in February for the National Conference on Education, where the association will announce the twenty twenty-three National Superintendent of the Year. We wish you luck, and we're very proud of you. Just congratulations on that. I do want to share just a few comments from the press release. The applicants were measured against the following criteria: leadership for learning, creative and successfully meeting the needs of students in the school system, communication strength in both personal and organizational communication professionalism, constant improvement of administrative knowledge and skills while providing professional development opportunities and motivation to others on the team. Community involvement, active participation in local community activities, and an understanding of regional, national, and even international issues. There is a ten thousand dollar scholarship that will be presented to the to a student in the high school from which the superintendent came from or currently serving in. So good luck to everyone on that. Yes. Okay, we are on to items for discussion and reports, and tonight we will have Simon Tyler, Director of Prairie Creek Community School, and Laura Stelter will present via Zoom. She is Director of Arcadia Charter School. Thank you for presenting your annual reports tonight. Welcome, Simon.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, School Board, for your time this evening. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to come in once a year and share with you. Congratulations, new and re-elected board members. And I'd like to add my congratulations to Dr. Hellman as well. His leadership is a tremendous support to both Prairie Creek and Arcadia Schools with regular technical assistance, but also mentoring of our leadership roles. So it's a well-deserved recognition, and I too wish you all the best with that. I have a fairly brief slideshow for you. I should have started probably by introducing myself. My name is Simon Tyler. I've been the Executive Director of Prairie Creek Charter School now for the last twelve years. Prairie Creek has been authorized by the Northfield School District since we first became a charter school in two thousand and two. So this is a longstanding relationship, and for those of you who've served on the board for a long time, I appreciate your forbearance if you're hearing mission pieces that you've heard on an annual basis from me for the last twelve years. What I will do is give you a few insights from the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which more comprehensively dealt within our annual report and also the narrative report that was in your packet. And then move through some academic financial pieces and give you a little insight into what's happening right now at our school and some of our future plans that we're excited about. At the end, there'll be an opportunity for questions. Okay, oh, let's go back one here. Let's start with just a quick mission review. The four pillars of the Prairie Creek Mission have remained unchanged really since the school was founded originally as an independent school back in nineteen eighty-three. Prairie Creek is a community school, a child-centered school, a progressive education school, and we have a mission that will work to make the world a better place. We have revised the values that underpin these mission statements over the years. The last revision led by board faculty and community was a couple of years ago now. And what I would say about mission in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, as you and all public schools know, was a complex return year from the circumstances of the pandemic. And and also turned out to continue to be a complicated year in many ways. Out at Prairie Creek, in our small school, we found that mission and the values that underpin it were really essential to us in working through that transition phase and help us start to look forward. And the next couple of slides just give you a little insight into what we focused on. One of the positive things that came out of the pandemic years for us was you know, being outdoors was a good thing during the pandemic and reminded us that this has always been an essential part of our mission to engage children in outdoor learning activities. And last year, we made intentional effort to really sort of double down on that. We have one day a week which we refer to as Wild Wednesday, which is Forest School Curriculum Day, where we may take advantage of a later start day and really center ourselves on being involved in outdoor activities with children. Partnerships were something that were challenged during the pandemic years, which we worked hard to renew and invigorate last year. So things that happened that were collaborations with others connected to outdoor learning, where we had a nature art residency with Carlton College staff and students. We were able to take students up to the Wolf Ridge Environmental Learning Center again. We began an environmental club, a student-centered environmental club with the support of environmental studies students and staff from St. Olaf College. And one thing emerged out of that initiative was that the students designed, raised money, and with community member help built a new hoop house for our school, and we'll be continuing to utilize that new resource this year. Other mission in action items from last year, again, a return to our interdisciplinary, multi-age programming, which circumstances did challenge a little bit for us during the pandemic years. A few things that we were able to focus on last year was dedicating more professional development time again back to mission and purpose in our education program, renewing our commitment to thematic interdisciplinary learning at each developmental level. Take the opportunities to bring back culminating events. There's a photograph on the slide in front of you where you can see a gym full of parents and community members looking at students' independent research projects. We had project fairs throughout the K twelve program. And then getting back to developing partnerships with our parent community was huge for us last year. So we have a community connections group, which is a group of staff and parents and a board member who build activities for families, but some of it was also just getting back to traditions. The slide on the lower left is our May Day celebration event that brings the whole community and local business together. I think it struck us all that this is something that we had really missed a lot during the period of time when we couldn't safely do that. Baltage is part of our program too, a central piece of our program. And so we did at the beginning of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year say, how do we refresh that commitment? What are a couple of structures we could put in place construct so it would help us re-energize our commitment to getting children together across the different age groups? One of these initiatives was an old school book club where staff worked together in professional development to select a particular book which children read together as a community, and they break out into, we call them bird buddies, small groups of children. There's a K one child, a two, three, and a four, five together studying, reading the book, doing service-related projects connected to it. And that was so successful for us, that's something that we're continuing in building upon this year. The slide on the bottom right shows three children engaged in activity around that book. Of course, we always want to report out to you on evaluation at our school and assessment data too. Like any public school, we participate in the Minnesota comprehensive assessments. And there's a summary chart on the right which details the last four years of M C As. Of course, there were no M C As administered in twenty twenty. And you can see from the data there that we continue to perform above state levels in science, math, and reading by that measurement. Part of our mission is also to know children in multiple other ways. We have as one of our mission values is that we'll honor the whole child and attend to the well-being of each child socially, emotionally, physically, and academically. I think like all schools, we've been stepping back and saying, what does that mean as we re-enter a more normal school space again this year? We know the social and emotional is critical and has been challenged, and the mental well-being of children as well is something that we put a lot of energy into last year, supporting children as they came back. So we're giving feedback to parents and families on how this is going through non-traditional evaluation tools as well, formative assessments, observations, research projects, seeing how and perform at things like thematic culminating events, habits of mind. And we do, our teachers do write two narrative reports about children twice a year that are shared with families that create a whole, a more whole child picture of progress. We also introduced last year an AdSIS grant-supported intervention program. So what that means is we have a point eight F T teacher who provides reading intervention. So it's tiered support. We thought this was particularly critical as children returned back into the school space that we needed to have an extra level of tutoring in our program. And we're now moving into the second year of AdSIS program and plan to revise the grant application to add a math intervention component as well. Because we continue to see a need for additional math support and tutoring. We continue to be financially healthy. The school has always prioritized having a strong fund balance. Our fund balance policy is that we'll have a fund balance of twenty-five percent three years out. And we've been true to that commitment throughout my my time as director. I would say always the graph indicates that we finished last year in very good financial health with a fund balance of forty-one, forty-three point one percent. We do anticipate that that will drop by the end of this year to about thirty-eight percent. And we're looking at our forecasting. We do forecast five years out typically to try and get a sense of where we're heading. And we share the concerns that other public schools have for their need for increased revenue. And certainly hopeful that that is something that might be in our future from the state and for us to maintain our programming at the level that it is over the next five years. I think it's going to be important that that revenue stream is increased. But at the moment, we are in good financial health. We had a clean audit in twenty-one, twenty-two from our auditors Clifton Larson Allen, and our finances are overseen by a board-led finance committee. So what's in the future for Prairie Creek? We feel very optimistic about the way twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is proceeding. We're continuing to re-establish community connections opportunity. We've already hosted two community connection, social events for families to get together. We continue to look for opportunities to nurture the agency of student voice. We have active student council groups, service groups, and of course, the environmental club. In conversation with the teachers about what they need, we're hearing that they're regaining, I think, a commitment to the aspirational nature of their work, their commitment to mission, their commitment to the pedagogy that brought them to our school. So we're building that into our professional development in terms of forest classroom review, looking at habits of mind and digging a little bit into our pedagogical roots. And one thing we've been able to renew is our practice of forging collaborations with other educators. This has always been part of the why behind Prairie Creek, that we honor the charter school piece of innovation. Having a space where we can try different things and then share our learning from others and learn from them. So we've been able to send educators this year to present at the Progressive Education Network Conference in Seattle. We've already welcomed a site visit of fifteen educators from the teacher-powered network Prairie Creek last fall. And we have two more site visits for educators who are interested in our program happening later this winter and this spring. So that's really energizing for us to get back to those collaborations, not to mention community collaborations with our authorized Northfield and local arts organizations and colleges. Other things that are exciting for us this year and into the future, being guided by our strategic plan. Our new strategic plan runs from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six in scope. It's designed to align with the contract we have with the authorizes, so each year we can come back and give you feedback on our progress. And we put together a much more flexible model where the action items in our strategic plan are reported out to faculty and board three times a year for winter and spring. So there's some concrete action that we can commit to and then measure our progress in. So what that looks like is a pretty unwieldy sort of Google sheet, which I don't have on paper for you in a slide. But it's a very nice fluid working document where we can assess our progress. And just to what is still, I think, a fairly complex time for schools in a flexible way. A strong piece of our strategic plan is our commitment to educating for equity. And we've asked ourselves a question, what does that look like going forward at Prairie Creek? And we're focused in on a couple of spaces for this year for strategic action items. We always have an arts residency at Prairie Creek, and as mentioned in an earlier slide, last year, we had a nature art residency that helped us hit our equity commitment around making the world a better place in terms of student connection to nature, their understanding of environmental stewardship. This year, we shifted our arts residency to a lens more of looking at social justice issues. We're currently in a dance residency with a dancer called Colin Away from the Compass Grant, and she is doing a dance residency with all the children, but also introducing history and information around the great migration in America. So we're finding this is an authentic way for us to open up conversation with children through the arts, through our connections with the outdoors. And then we're supporting this with the books we're using as part of our old school book club activity as well, which is ongoing this year. And with that, I'll close my my slideshow and welcome any questions or discussions you have about happenings out at Prairie Creek.
Thank you, Simon. Excellent presentation. All I hear are praises about Prairie Creek. So, well done. Any comments?
Would we like to maybe have Laura present? She's remote. Maybe we have Laura present, and then they could ask questions of both, if that makes sense?
Um, yeah, that if people feel okay with that. Okay, sure. Thank you, Simon.
Thank you.
We'll call you back in a minute.
So we're bringing Laura Stelter on via Zoom. She's coming on momentarily here.
Thank you for letting me join remotely. I am taking care of some family needs right now. My father is dying, so I am home. So I apologize if the internet cuts out. I am kind of in the middle of nowhere in Minnesota. So, um. Thank you so much for having me remotely. I really appreciate that accommodation. I apologize that it needs to be this way. But here we are. And so Arcadia, this twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we had a really great year. It was wonderful to be back on campus. And so I like to start with the mission and the vision, just reminding everybody what our mission and vision is. I actually used this picture last year, but realized that this picture was actually, I used the picture in a presentation for twenty twenty-one, but that was actually from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and I wanted to bring it back because it talks, speaks to something that we did at the beginning of the year with our mission and vision. So it's our mission and vision to prepare our students to transition intellectually, emotionally, and ethically to higher education, future employment, and engaged citizenship. And one of the things that we were concerned about as students came back on campus after a year of being online was that they were going to need to reconnect as a community and also practice some student skills that maybe they didn't get to do every day when they were working online versus together, especially around classroom discussion. We use the accountable talk framework as a discussion framework for students. And so we started out the year with a nine-day-long civics-based opening expedition that really was closely connected to our progressive mission, being a school that cares a lot about civic engagement and democracy, democratic ideals. So we spent that time, we were outside for a lot of that, which was really lovely because we were still, of course, concerned about the spread of COVID. Arcadia never actually entered outbreak status. We were one of the only schools that never had an outbreak of COVID. And knocking on wood, that will remain the case. And so they worked together to create a social contract. It was called the Arcadia Bill of Rights and Responsibilities, and they did a lot of study to actually put that together. And a lot of, practiced a lot of skills. We did close reading. They had, they were annotating texts. They were writing. And of course, doing a lot of small group and larger group discussion. And so the image here is actually one of the groups discussing poems, I believe that was the, what they were working on at that moment. So we were looking at a set of poems that were helping them to more deeply understand some of the concepts we were looking at. We really did a deep dive into the concept of social contracts. So that was our opening expedition. The other piece that was really big last year, Arcadia, as you can see in our mission, we are a project-based school. And so we really renewed our focus on project-based learning in the last year. So all of the staff, all of the licensed teachers went through project-based learning, P B L one-on-one to sort of remind themselves what all of the wonderful things that are possible through project-based learning could be. And then incorporated projects into the core classes. So previously, there's been a fair amount of like projects for one track, and then classes were this other track. And we're trying to look at, project-based learning can be a really powerful tool as part of core classes as well. And so how do we integrate that into everything that we're doing? And we also spent some time last year creating an Arcadia rubric, which was a way that we are measuring ourselves in achieving our mission and vision. So we created a rubric that had categories that then have indicators that would help us. We'll, we'll be going through that probably at the the board retreat at the, I believe that's happening at the beginning of February, usually at the end of January, but I think it's February this year. And so I put links to these things in the documents if you'd like to see them too. And then we actually, I just wanted to also mention, so we've been doing all this work with project-based learning and really embracing our progressive nature as a school. And we actually have a presentation night this week where students will be presenting their projects from the first half of the year. So that's this week on Thursday at six thirty P M, and anybody is welcome to come. So if you'd like to see what they are up to, stop by and check it out. Our enrollment last year was really interesting. So we went from around one thirteen in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to one twenty-eight last year. And our A D M increased from one oh eight to over to one twenty-four point five, which made a really big difference in our funding. So you'll see our fund balance saw a pretty significant increase in the last year. And a lot of those students were coming from outside of Northfield. So we had students from, I think I list them here, yeah, so all over the area. And a lot of people had a connection. They had a friend, they had a cousin, and they knew somebody. One of the other things that I think is interesting about this is we've had some people who, one of the siblings will come to Arcadia, and the other is in the Northfield School District. So I feel like that's been a plus for hopefully both Arcadia and our authorizer and student achievement. So and student achievement. So looking at MCA data, our participation was back up over ninety percent. We had a pretty significant dip the year before. I think it was in the forty percent range of students who were actually participating in the MCAs. We did have more students opt out in math this past year than we have previously. We're expecting that to sort of go back to regular participation as we move away from the pandemic. Our scores continue to be above state and local averages, especially in reading and science. They both dipped a bit lower than our previous, in previous years. So we're certainly paying attention to that. We're sure that the data reflects COVID impacts. But we are seeing lots of progress, especially in math scores, which aren't on the slide. But looking at growth scores, we feel like students are still getting what they need and we're trying to find ways to really support them in regaining some of what they probably would have learned if they had been in a traditional setting, like with us in person. Our juniors' math scores, so our, our math scores overall were low and certainly are the area that we are really digging into and most concerned about. Our juniors' math scores did exceed the state average. They were at forty-seven point one percent. But overall, our math scores are low. So we've, we've had a number of conversations around how, as a school, as a whole, we will support math, not just asking the math teachers to do that. But QCOM, our QCOM goal is around math and increasing students' math achievement. The whole staff has been discussing ways that they can incorporate math across the curriculum. So thinking about math concepts and how we talk about those and actually help make those connections really clear to students. And we hired a tutor who works with students one-on-one. And the, both of our teachers have really spent a lot of time working with students and giving them additional support outside of class too. So we have a couple of times during the day when that's possible, we have project-based learning time built into the day, which project work time can also be a really good time to meet with students if they need some additional support in a particular area. And then, of course, study hall time for the middle school, that's an option for students. And then some students, the math teacher asks them specifically to meet with her during that time. Although they don't have to actually take study hall to meet with her. So she tries to make sure that she catches people when they need it. But it doesn't necessarily limit their participation in other electives or classes. Financial management. So our fund balance was at six hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred sixteen dollars at the end of the last fiscal year. That's thirty-three point two seven percent of our, that's our general fund balance. So that puts us in a pretty solid financial position. We have some room to weather some storms, but funding is still a challenge, obviously. And so we are really hoping we'll be supporting and hoping for some more support from the state, especially revenue that would help us continue to offer really excellent programming to our students. So that brings me to my question and discussion slide. So I think we were gonna have both Simon and I answering questions together. So I'll pause for a minute here.
Are there any comments or questions from the board members? Amy?
Well, thank you both, Simon and Laura, for your presentations. And Simon, I'm always extra happy to see you here because of our personal family connection to Prairie Creek. So I love hearing what's happening there. You both discussed test scores and how test scores were impacted through the pandemic. But I want to go beyond that a bit now that hopefully the pandemic is in our rearview mirror. I was wondering if you could comment on sort of the social, emotional wellbeing of your children, your students, how you see that that's been impacted. Also, I'm curious about what you've learned from the pandemic and if there was anything good that came out of the pandemic. So if you could just let me know what you've learned and where you're, where it's taking us.
Sure. Is that a question to both of us?
Yes, to both of you.
Yeah, to take the first part of your question about the social, emotional piece. I think it's pretty well documented that there was a huge impact on young children in particular. So this is not supported by any hard data or graphs I can give you, first of all, I should say this. But in our small setting, what, what we've seen is the children in our kindergarten, first grade, second grade have needed a lot of attention around how to re-enter the school space and be socially successful. And really, that makes a lot of sense if you sort of do the math backwards on those youngest children's experience during the pandemic, you have the critical years of preschool, kindergarten were impacted. And we, we see an impact there in academic progress as well as children in our first, second grade years, which is, which is also correlates, I think, back to the pandemic experience. So we've put a lot of energy into thinking about how do we academically support children in that first, second, third grade bracket area? For us, that looks like taking that assist-supported reading intervention, for example, and prioritizing supporting children who are in general ed, not getting special education services. But we, we see a need. We see an impact there. And then we're monitoring progress in those spaces, utilizing different evaluation tools such as FastBridge, because that's a full winter, spring, and we can examine growth. I think math took a particular hit as an academic area. We found that our students generally, program-wide, continued to be successful in regard to literacy. Math instruction was very difficult, I think, to do, particularly with the youngest children in an online environment. So with, with seeing the need to be careful with our groupings, put a little more attention into foundational skills. So, but our children feel they're academically successful while we're also focusing in on the social, emotional needs. And for us, that's a lot of getting back to relationships, building trust in the space children are in, first of all, make them feel safe. Make, taking advantage of the components of our mission that we know already support the social, emotional, making sure children have time to play is critical for us. So yes, we're very attentive to their academic needs, and of course, we should be. But we're just as attentive to making sure children have time to play, children have time to be creative, children have time to re-engage with the arts, children have time to participate in our outdoor learning focus. I think that's the best work we can do to support their social, emotional development. And then align that to professional support, really high-quality professional support. I think I mentioned in the narrative that last year, we invested in a lot of time and support from our educational psychologist, Michelle Flannery, who's very skilled, knowledgeable in areas of trauma, mental health. She's led sessions for staff. She wrote regular newsletters to families, giving parents tips on how to support children's wellbeing in the home setting. So, so of course, that work hasn't ended, but I think it was a particular focus of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. And so we'll need to stay attentive to. But I'm also seeing children rebound. Children, like teachers, are incredibly resilient. And we're, we're already noticing the community being rebuilt, I think, day upon day this year. And that feels really optimistic. And I'll just finish on the second part of your question. Give Laura a space. I think it was about what did we learn? Silver lining for us is undoubtedly the celebration of environmental education, outdoor space, outdoor play. I think it's always been integral to our program and our belief it helps children be successful in all areas, physical, social, emotional, mental, as well as academic. So to have seen how that's supported children through the pandemic, when it actually became a good thing to be outside from a health perspective, and then so rebuild that into a curricular focus this year. For me, that was, that was a silver lining.
Thank you, Simon.
And so social, emotional learning and then silver linings. I think for social, emotional learning, we really leaned into our community and it was really, this is sort of a silver lining and a social, emotional learning piece. I think we discovered what a really fantastic community we had built prior to the pandemic that really sustained us through it. And then afterward, when we came back, we were very intentional about rebuilding a very strong sense of identity around being a community, being a school where students support each other and their connections, close connections with staff who support the students and, and with families. And so I think socially, emotionally, like, you know, students, I think are a lot more anxious. And then prior to the pandemic, we, we just see a lot more anxiety, I think. And we've tried to work really hard to challenge students academically in ways that felt like they could, like it was attainable, like they had the skills. And so we, like I said, we spent that nine-day opening expedition really working on like, okay, these are the skills that you really need to be successful, and now you can do that. And we had, let's see, so last year, we did like the, the really extended version. This year, we did just the first four days we did this opening expedition piece. It went really, really well. I think one way that sometimes students express emotional distress is through behavior. I have only had two behavior referrals all year. And I think that really speaks to how, like, the work that the staff did to really make it feel like a safe, connected community where students can learn, students can develop and discover and explore their identities. And so I think there's been a lot of really good things that have come from sort of that renewed sense that we have to make this foundational, like, community has to be a really strong basis for everything that we do. The other thing that has come out of that, we we were already sort of moving toward a restorative practices framework for approaching how we work with students. And we have, we are really, really diving into that as well. So like at the beginning of this year, so you'll hear about this in my presentation next year. But we did multiple days of training with Becky McCammon, who was actually, she was in St. Paul Public Schools, the person implementing restorative practices across schools for the St. Paul Public School District. She's working with Arcadia to do the same here. And the staff spent four days working on that at the beginning of the year. We are doing an additional training on January twenty-third and then another February twentieth. And then the other half of February twentieth will be on working with multilingual students. And so we, we're doing a lot of things that are all about building really strong foundational relationships amongst and between students and each other, students and staff. And so I think, I think we moved faster toward restorative practices, being like a full implementation of that because of the pandemic, and it also really fits with who we are as a community.
Thank you, Laura. I look forward to hearing more about your restorative practices next year.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Jenny?
I have one question for Simon and also one question for Laura. I'll, I'll start with Simon. I noticed the, and I'm curious, you reading assessment scores have gone up when many other schools have gone down in reading. Do you see that there were any additions or changes to reading instruction, curriculum, or maybe additional programs? Maybe just different teaching style that you could see that helped with that success?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for the question, Jenny. It's a good one. I, I'm always quick to say on either side of the test scores that we're a very small cell size. So, you know, the, the trend data can be difficult to navigate. But I think the literacy has remained consistently strong. I think there are a couple of things we did very intentionally as we emerged out of the hardest times of the pandemic with reading. I mentioned a couple of times, one of those was an intervention program. And certainly that's helped, but I would credit the teachers who've worked just tremendously hard to bring a balanced approach to literacy. Literacy instruction is a hot topic right now. I know, when has it not been in, in public education? But I always come back to it, it, it has to be multifaceted. So we utilize some Orton, Orton-Gillingham strategies. We're doing a lot of focus on vocabulary. We're utilizing book groups. We're using leveled curriculum where it makes sense and, and QRA assessments for our older children to really know where children are and where that intervention support is needed. But a lot of that intervention support, which maybe plays out in the data a little bit, is credit to the teachers and the way they know their children and have continued to know them throughout the last few years. So I, I do credit the teachers a lot. We spend a lot of time in professional development, talking about best practices and learning from the latest research. And this is a field that's constantly changing and we need to be agile enough to respond to it. So I, I, I think, I think as part of it, I, I do think also we're an interdisciplinary program in focus. And one of the big things, as I highlight in a slide, was to be able to get back to thematic learning. So by thematic learning, I'm talking about social studies or science-centered, deep-study projects that happen over a period of time. It, it, they're great spaces to embed best literacy practices. So we, we don't just see reading and writing as concrete areas where the, the only spaces where literacy happens. Literacy is part of our arts program. It's part of our outdoor learning program. It's part of our thematic interdisciplinary program too. So that's our approach.
Thank you very much. And then for Laura, I have a question regarding the enrollment. Said that, so it has increased. And you had said that a lot of students from outside Northfield are enrolled. Did you mean that the, that, that the increase of the fifteen students were mainly from outside Northfield? Or is that overall? Did you mean overall enrollment was outside Northfield?
Um, the increase in students was mainly coming from outside Northfield. The majority of our students are from the Northfield School District. But then the students who were coming in last year, we had a large number not coming from Northfield. So it was, it was unique. It was unexpected.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Ben?
Just wanted to say thank you to Simon and to Laura. I know our thoughts are with you as you're with your father this evening. And just really wanted to commend, I think, the relationship between the district and the charter schools. You know, when we look back at kind of the history of charter schools and then, you know, they came from Minnesota, the idea in the early nineties. And in Northfield is really kind of one of the few places where that idea of a district charter school authorized relationship still exists in the state. And, you know, I think really is a good example of what, you know, the original legislation was trying to, to accomplish. So thank you for your presentations and for all the excellent work that's happening at both schools.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else comment or question?
So I just would like to reiterate what Ben said about just reminding board members in the community that Northfield School District is one of only two traditional public school districts left in the state that still authorize charter schools. Yes, veteran board members, look at me and say, why are you saying that again? Because we have new people in the audience today. We have new people watching and we just need people to understand that we have a very different relationship. relationship. It is collaborative as opposed to um at loggerheads, which is wonderful. Uh we really believe that this uh partnership supports public school choice and gives our families public school options, which are important. Uh also wanted to remind people that we were recently recertified. I think that's the term recertified as an authorizer for the next five years. And I am happy to report that uh tomorrow morning, uh authorizers are going to learn that there's going to be finally some changes to the authorizer process, which is actually going to simplify uh our burden to maintain our authorizer status. So fingers crossed, we've tried, we've introduced legislation before, uh but through our statewide organization, the Charter Authorizers Group, uh we think that there's going to be some good things coming. And then uh finally, uh of course, wanting to thank Simon and Laura. We meet quarterly. We have a a a framework in which we have an intentional process, which is great. I do want to point out their excellent financial management. Now, when you think about forty-three percent fund balance and thirty-seven percent fund balance, and we think about us with our goal of being fourteen percent, you might say, oh, my goodness. But what both of these charter school directors will tell you is that the smaller the school and the fewer number of students, the higher the fund balance you need to be able to get through difficult times. And so it wasn't even all that long ago that both schools and I talked about their budget changes dramatically if they have five students who not come, right? So I mean, if you just think about the really kind of thin margin that they are doing, uh it's pretty impressive. And so when you see that large fund balance number, that's really important because they have less room for more, less room for uh having five students that don't come back, you know, than we do. And so I think that's just a really important piece of context for the community to understand about it is a different financial model. I really appreciate uh the way, especially that I want to compliment specifically Prairie Creek, very innovative in terms of having that fund balance, not just looking out next year, but out several years because that ensures their ability to have that fiscal solvency that they so need. So again, congratulations. I just really relish my relationship with the two charter school directors. We appreciate the excellent educational uh choice that they provide for public school uh here within our school district. And we just look forward to years more of outstanding partnership.
Thank you to you both, and we're sorry to hear about your situation, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on items for discussion and reports is Director of Student Activities, Bubba Sullivan, bringing a recommendation for the dissolution of girls' hockey cooperative sponsorship.
And uh I I might not look like Bubba Sullivan, but I am Bubba Sullivan tonight, uh because as you might imagine, with the weather last week, there are a lot of rescheduled games. And so Bubba is not able to be here tonight, so I'll be uh presenting on his behalf here. So uh you may recall just uh before the new year, uh we asked the board to approve the dissolution of a uh girl swim and dive sponsorship uh with Randolph Schools. This is part of the ongoing deep dive that we've been doing into the school district's cooperative sponsorships. Uh we've been working with uh former uh Northfield High School Activities Director Kevin Merkel, who's also a former State High School League employee, to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what are all of the different cooperative sponsorships that have been approved over the years. And then we are looking at the ones that we have in place to make sure that if we have something in place, for example, like we have in place with Arcadia or something that we have in place for our Alpine Ski or for our gymnastics that they that still makes sense. What we're proposing uh for dissolution at this time would be the girls' hockey cooperative sponsorship with Rand, the Randolph School District. So we're not asking you to vote on this tonight. Uh we currently have no Randolph High School students who are participating in our girls' hockey uh program. And the important thing about cooperative sponsorships is the the State High School League calculates the enrollment for the purposes of competitive placement, including uh uh it's a calculation with both schools. And I'm not going to get into the calculation. It takes into account free and reduced lunch counts, a number of things, but just you got to understand, I'm not going to get into the calculation, but we are impacted in terms of where our varsity teams are placed for their competitive section placement and their competitive classification placement based on that total enrollment. Uh and so we are going to propose now that we dissolve that girls' hockey cooperative sponsorship. There are no girls currently um playing on our team that are from Randolph, so we feel that we can do that for next school year. The other point that I want to make here tonight is that, as I've said, we are looking at a number of other cooperative sponsorships. And we are also looking at creating a set of guiding principles for when does it make sense for us to enter a cooperative sponsorship and when does it not? So uh while we are not prepared to to recommend the dissolution of the boys' hockey cooperative sponsorship with Randolph, we are uh strongly considering that long-term viability. We do have one participant right now uh from Randolph on our boys' hockey team. And so there's discussion about the potential of asking you to dissolve that a few years out so that that student would be able to complete their career uh in the sport that they had understood that they would be able to participate in. And then also so that anyone who is not yet in ninth grade uh at Randolph would know that that cooperative sponsorship will be dissolved as of a certain year. Again, we're not prepared to make that recommendation tonight. Um but I want you to know that we're investigating that and that that will most likely come back to you uh yet this winter. And again, what we're trying to do is especially in two class sports where it's A and double A. Our high school is right on that edge. We straddle. So in some cases, because what they do is they actually sort out how many schools in the state have the program. They do a calculation and put the top portion in the larger class double A and then the smaller just schools in the single class, single A. We straddle that line. And so we are currently uh undergoing the process to be placed in our competitive section placement fairly soon for the next couple of years. And again, just taking into account that balance of if we have an athletic uh program where we would not be able to offer it right without cooperative sponsorship, that would make sense for us to continue with cooperative sponsorship. But if we don't, if it is not that kind of circumstance, we want to take a hard look at it to make sure that our student athletes have the best competitive opportunity that they have to be successful. So again, no action on this tonight. The girls' uh dissolution is exactly the same process that we were using uh before the first of the year when you voted to do that uh in uh late twenty twenty-two. We'll bring this as an item for individual action at the next meeting and then just expect we'll continue to talk about a potential dissolution of the boys' hockey cooperative sponsorship uh as we move forward. So I'd stand for any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Dr. Hillman. Um will you now present on the recommended updates to policy eight oh one?
I will. So when we look at policy one, if you can just give me a moment to bring my Thank you for your patience. All right, as we take a look at policy eight oh one, this is the first reading. This policy, uh we're now into the eight hundred series. So you may recall that our policy committee has a goal of reviewing every policy at least once every five years. Number of our policies are reviewed more often than that if there are statutory changes. A policy eight oh one is uh equal access to secondary school facilities by students. There are not a ton of recommended recommended changes to this policy. Uh we have done some uh updating and to be more specific around what non-instructional time means. So this is the policy that allows student-led groups to be able to use our facility during non-instructional times. And so we just did some further definition on what non-instructional time means. Um and then we also did some further definition of what is a student, wanting to be as clear as we potentially could uh there. And then you will see that those are essentially the proposed changes to this policy, other than just some style guide kinds of things. So that is policy eight oh one. Again, not asking to vote on it tonight. This will come forward for second reading uh at the next meeting.
And I had a question about um why it's not in the consent agenda. Will that be in the consent agenda at the next meeting?
Um we would act, so we are bringing forward consent to the consent grouping when the state makes a legislative change that requires us to change our policy. So that is when we're going to bring policies to the consent agenda. We do look at, for example, in this policy, if we had simply changed Northfield School District, right? You've adopted uh an action that allows us just to make the change on the website, just saying that it was a very technical change that we don't have to bring that back to you. We determined that this one needed to come forward just because of the additional definition around non-instructional time and the addition of the student section. So again, I don't think there's a lot controversial here, but that's why it's going to come for a regular action item at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this policy? Great. Finally, Dr. Hillman, give us your operations update.
Yes, I just have a couple of items for you uh this evening. And uh the first item I want to share with you is I've included in the report the December first child count now that for special education. And the December one child count in special education uh matters to us because that is the number that drives uh state and federal special education funding. So we get a differentiated amount of funding for students with disabilities based on the categorization of their disability. So if a disability requires additional, more additional support than others, those would get more dollars than uh a special education uh classification that just needs minimal support, if you will. So there's a differentiated funding system, the numbers that come in on December first, that is what drives it. So it's important with that. We're sharing with you that uh we are seeing six hundred and ninety-three students who are receiving special education services. Remember, we provide special education services uh from birth through twenty-one years old. That's what we are required to do. It's an increase of five students over last year, and you'll see that our current percentage of students ages six to eighteen receiving special education services is now just below the state average. We have sixteen percent compared to the latest state average from twenty twenty-one, which is sixteen point nine percent. It's pretty close, but just slightly below the state average. You'll also see that we differentiated uh out the number of special education students by school. We uh two points I want to make is some uh folks might say, well, why do you have St. Dominic's, you know, on that uh chart? Well, we are required by law to be able to support special education services for students in private school settings. So um typically, we provide those students, those services to students at St. Dominic's using staff from Greenville Park typically. Uh sometimes it doesn't make sense. We might have to send somebody else, but traditionally, we have tried to partner any Dominic services with uh folks from Greenville Park, just from the travel time perspective. Then we do note the number of Northfield students who are participating in Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative Programs. To be clear, those twenty-one students are not considered part of our child count. They are actually considered part of the SEVSEC child count, but we wanted you to see uh how many students we have participating in the cooperative. Uh now, I I have not given you all of the breakout of the disability categories, but I share with you the top six disability categories. And so you can see that um specific learning disability, that is uh where we need some specific instruction in an predominantly in an academic area. So it could be that I have a disability that is preventing me from uh effectively acquiring reading skills or numeracy skills. So it's something that is, you know, what we would consider to be a more traditional academic area. You see, we uh serve a lot of students with speech language issues. Um our students who receive services for autism has really increased over the years and we're at a hundred students. And you'll see the rest of those uh items that I have listed there. Uh and so again, you know, the big picture here is that we are very proud to have a stellar, and I really mean that, a stellar reputation for our special education programs across the state. If you've not heard this as a board member before, I can fairly uh certainly tell you that someone at some point will tell you that they moved to Northfield because they had a child with a disability and they knew that the services that their child would receive here would be exemplary. So these are morally imperative and mandated services that unfortunately cost a significant amount more than the reimbursement that the district receives for them. You may recall that when uh the law that uh uh predicated special education services in the country uh happened in the nineteen seventies, the federal government said that they would pay around forty percent or they'd reimburse school districts for forty percent of the costs. We don't believe that uh we've, as we calculated, I don't think, Val, we've said they've ever gotten above twenty-one percent. And it's been going backwards uh in the last several years. Of course, Minnesota has to have higher requirements than the feds do. So that adds to what we call our special education cross subsidy. And you've heard me say scores of times that uh we spend around five million dollars of general fund money on these services that are morally imperative and required for students with disabilities. And so uh our district's Legislative Action Committee continues to work very hard to have, uh to lobby the state legislature and the federal uh government to fully fund the special education cross subsidy. We are lobbying uh the state legislature to do that this session because it is a piece that we know it's been a problem for years, affects nearly every school district in the state, and it would have a significant impact on school districts budgets. So that takes me to my next part of my um update, which is that the legislative session is underway. And so we just want to remind people that there is a seventeen billion dollar with a B surplus that the state is working through. We want to remind you that this is the first year of a biennium. So the state uh the legislature is required by law to pass a budget and have it signed by the governor by the end. There's a certain amount of legal work where they have to complete a budget by the end of this particular session. So they have to finish their work or in the second year of the biennium, as we all painfully learned last year, they do not have to complete any work in the second year of the biennium, right? They're required to complete their work uh in the first year of the biennium. And state law, you need to be able to have those dollars to fund state government. And so as a school district and working with all of our uh legislative partners, you know, we really see this legislative session as a once in a generation opportunity uh for schools to receive substantial financial investment, really things that address decades of chronic underfunding. So uh we will start bringing platform items to really the first couple of weeks of the legislative session where they are starting to hear bills. They are starting to put bills into committee, but we're really getting started. So you will have our uh a number of legislative updates at our January twenty-third meeting, including calls to action about what you can do as board members and what the community can do uh to make sure that uh we are really advocating for these strong uh these strong changes and structural fixes. We are very pleased that our new uh House of Representatives representative, Kristy Purcell, has been assigned to the House Education Finance Committee. And uh Kristy is Representative Purcell is a former member of our District Finance Advisory Committee. So we know that that was an important part of why she was placed on that committee was her experience with the Northfield School District uh Finance Advisory Committee. So uh please pay attention to the legislature. It's really important. And you'll be sick of me talking about it by the end of the session, I promise. Uh final item is just a really a great feel-good story about, I I think about perishable food uh donated to the C A C. As the person who's responsible for working with our bus company to make determinations about if winter weather prevents us from coming to school, we take that very seriously because uh anytime that we cancel school or close school, it impacts all sorts of people other than folks who don't, you know, send their students to school in person that day. There's a ton of other things that it impacts, one of which is our child nutrition department is prepared to serve lunch. And as you know, uh if you've been watching our presentations over the last several years, we continue to offer a tremendous amount of fresh fruits and vegetables for students every day. And there are obviously very strict requirements about how long those perishable food items can be maintained. We have a different level of uh requirement than, say, a food shelf does. And so I just included in the packet uh uh something that's called a No Northfield. It's a piece of data that comes out to our staff uh and board every Sunday night. This just gives you an example of what happened on the day that we had to cancel for the predicted blizzard, and use the word predicted uh blizzard on December twenty-second. And you'll see that we uh donated over three hundred pounds uh of perishable food items to the C A C. And this is uh a demonstration of our commitment to partnerships, to people and to equity um when students who are relying on us to have their food um at school and they're not able to be there or they're not able to come, the food shelf can be an important piece to support student families in this fret, this infusion of fresh um uh fresh um perishable food is really something that's important to continue supporting our students in the community. So those are my three items to share with you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Excellent. Any comments or questions? Amy, go ahead.
Thank you, Matt. Um I have a question about the perishable food items. I think it's great that we're making sure they don't get thrown out. Fantastic. I'm wondering for a couple of questions. The first is do they get donated immediately, like the same day that the school is closed?
I I believe so.
Okay. That's great. And still people have to get out in the snowstorms to get to them, and at least there's that access. And the other question I have is I know a lot of our students have food insecurity, and I'm wondering if there's any way we can make this food available to those students um or some of it, or have something where they could pick it up at the school or the backpack program or whatever it might be.
So obviously, that's a uh, of course, we're, our goal is to support our students. Uh we do this in a number ways, for example, partnerships with Carleton College in St. Olaf through the Community School Program where that kind of thing happens at the community school programming. Obviously, this is a little bit of a different circumstance. If we have closed school, our child, most of our child nutrition people most of our child nutrition people are not coming to the site. And so the key part is this, the trying to address that food insecurity is through partnership with the Community Action Center that does have two locations, right, where students and families can secure food. So this is the way that we are trying to provide students with food insecurity access to that perishable food. It just, we don't have the capacity to be able to do what you're talking about with our existing staffing on those days. So are using partners who do have that capacity to be able to do that.
And that makes sense. And I guess part of it was if we have some left the next day, so the day school starts again, could we give that out to the students then, or is there no need to at that point?
Yeah. So anything that hasn't been given, it would be served at lunch the next day, right? Or the next time that they come back. And so as you recall, all students right now who qualify for free or reduced lunch. So in Minnesota, any student who qualifies for either free or reduced lunch under the federal guidelines receives lunch. And there's unlimited fruits and vegetables, you know, that are part of that. So theoretically, what you're saying is that when a student comes back to school that next day, any of that additional food that is still eligible for us to be able to use, we'll have an opportunity to get it that day. See, Val's going to weigh in here, too.
Sorry. Right before the pandemic, our child nutrition department did do a pilot with the CAC. I think they did it twice a week where they came and picked up any of the leftover food that they would not be able to reuse. And so I know that they're in talks to kind of restart that. It obviously didn't happen during the pandemic, but that is something they're working to bring back. So there, there are some options related to that.
Thank you. I'm glad someone's thinking about it.
Good question. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, and I just wanted to let board members know I'm going to be requesting about a 10-minute comfort break after we conclude our business with the consent agenda. Um, as a reminder, there are some personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? By Corey. Second by Amy. Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I would like to request a 10-minute comfort break. Is there a second? Goodbye, Amy. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are in break for 10 minutes. Be back at 7:38. We are back from recess. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item seven. Items for individual action, and we do have an updated addition, which is a resolution of school board supporting form B1, application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. The motion is to approve the resolution of school board supporting form B1, application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. I'll take a motion, a second, and then any discussion. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Okay, move by Jenny. Thank you. Now the second, by Amy. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Comments or questions? A presentation?
No interest. So what, what happens is we are able to submit to the State High School League for reimbursement for such things. So you'll see that this is for reimbursement for the transportation to the Together We Make a Difference World Cafe event that students attended in September. And so we're getting reimbursed the $374.88. And when we've done this kind of grant reimbursement from the State High School League, we've asked you to adopt it as a resolution.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All those, if there's no further comments or discussion. Oh, yes, it is a resolution. So this will be a roll call vote, and Anita will facilitate. Thank you, Anita.
Butler?
Aye.
Erwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Pinnell?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, we're on to the, our second item of individual action, and that is nomination and appointment of a board member to fill the vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence of Director Noel Stratton until he is able to resume his duties or for the remainder of the unexpired term, whichever is earliest. We had seven eligible residents, though I, we did have one person just today asked to be withdrawn. And they completed the online interest form in time for the, by the deadline. And board members have reviewed all of the forms. I am getting ready to review the process for nominating and appointing a board member. And I want to say, first of all, thank you to those of you who stepped up to be considered and are here tonight. There's also one person who's not able to be here tonight, but is still under consideration, and Dr. Hillman will read that individual's letter. This is an important job, and I applaud each of you for putting yourselves out here. We hope that you will continue to be involved in our district through various avenues, regardless of tonight's outcome, and even consider running in the next election 2024. This is the process. I will invite each person to the podium to address the board for two minutes. This will be a listening opportunity. Vice Chair Butler will manage the two minutes. Immediately after the presentations, I will call on any board member offering to nominate any person. After I close the nominations, I will call on any board member with any comments to their nomination. Once I close the discussion, Anita will take a roll call vote on each nominated person in the order that they were nominated. The first nominee to receive a majority of the votes completes the process, and no other nominees will be voted upon. The nominee will sign the acceptance of office tonight, and I will administer the ceremonial oath of office to the appointee. Should I go ahead and start with the process now?
Think you'd like those.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I just have, number one, a point of information here, and I'm going to make a brief motion. I was on the 2016 Steering Committee and followed that whole process, and I think it worked extremely well. I did, if you Google Northfield School Board Appointment 2016, it comes right up on there, but it was basically the, the meeting part of it only lasted 25 minutes. And the, 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 the public hearing was only 20 minutes, but basically what we did is, is in 2016, we had four candidates. Now we have six or seven, and I really haven't talked met any, you know, I mean, a couple of them, no, but I mean, I just, so we had basically, what we did is a subcommittee of three. And it was the chair, it was Julie, Margaret, myself, another person. Basically, I would suggest to do the same thing in 2023 here. We now have six candidates to vet, and basically with the Steering Committee, we had four criteria and some other things that we kind of went through and, and, and processed with the school board members. Of the three, and then we reported back to the board, and they could amend that. So in 2016, we had four main criteria we used. We could start with that criteria, the subcommittee amended as you see fit, as a report, and then report back to the board. All relevant statutes need to be understood and communicated to the board and communicated to public candidates. So it's kind of more like the Northfield Public Schools. I just would like to see a more of a public process with this. I don't see anybody here necessarily tonight, and I don't know where the interest level is, but and then part of that process, which I don't know or see, and I guess you're going to see if they're vetted or not, is to do candidates have any known or potential ethical issues that should be discussed in the vetting and the application process. I will be proposing a motion to input to the board. My laptop went dead, so I'm working off my cellphone here. I will be proposing a motion that with input from the board agree to have public hearing, which went on the, the last time, went about 20 minutes. And then followed up with the nomination tempers. Generally, a subcommittee would recommend two final candidates to the board. These candidates have to be nominated as well as any other four possible. So I mean, I, a little bit different process. This process is highly, in a lot of respects, the way this is set up, I mean, it's just, you know, I would, I would have more of a roll call vote and pick two candidates and then get it down, but the process is highly biased, in my opinion, on who the chair picks for the first nomination. The chair picks that first choice based on how, how the hands are raised and nominated. Then you do a roll call vote on that nominee. That candidate gets four votes. If they get that, they're in, then immediately elected for the Noel Stratton own seat until the next time that he returns to the board. But so Noel, and this is another part, this is the beginning of Noel's first two years. So I mean, I know we have, and it's been mentioned to me, that's why I'm going to mention it, is we have one candidate that just was on the school board and lost, and, and now potentially, he can be back on the board when he actually lost an election.
Jeff, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Okay, okay. So anyway, the process we use in 2016 was very timely, fair, and professional. Julie Pritchard, as chair, did a great job of leading public hearing. The public board meeting that followed, this was an excellent example of leadership in public service of the Northfield School Board in February of 2016, an excellent example of standard for the board to follow in 2023. So the motion, and I do believe that Noel is, I talked to him on the phone on Wednesday. I think he'll be back in 90 days. So what I was going to do is suggest we just wait for 90 days, but, but instead of that, I'm moving towards our next meeting is the, the 23rd, or what was our next meeting of the?
The 23rd.
Yeah, 23rd. So 23rd, so within, even within like the next meeting, I, I, I pretty much wanted to do the subcommittee, and I was actually suggesting Claudia, Amy, and Jeff. And you, it's funny that you talked to, you, you didn't talk to me, or nobody asked me anything that's been through this process. And you talked to Julie, and by the way, Julie did an excellent job on, we did this in 2016, so.
Julie was the chair at that point, so we consulted with her about that.
Well, that's fine, but I'm still on the board or whatever it is. So you could ask, you know, could ask me, but I'm just.
Still on the board when we asked her.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that, you know, she's, whatever her opinion was, I have an opinion too of how it worked and whatever else. I'm just making that, that point. So I just think that, I think what, what, what I'm going to do in a sense, because I kind of talked a little bit and kind of getting the feeling here, is that I'm going to withdraw my motion and let you run the process here in a sense. Well, actually, I don't know if you'd be, I do like the idea of the steering committees. Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to move this motion and see what you say. So I didn't need, need a vote, so. So I was at 90 days. Now I'm at even like the next meeting, but I do really like the idea of the steering committee. And I do like the idea of getting to know the people. I don't know anybody on it. I mean, I knew all four of the other people. We talked and vetted that. So I'll just go with the motion here and see, see where it goes. I need somebody to second this, and then we can discuss or vote. Would you discuss that first, or would you just enter motion, vote on it?
I think parliamentary procedure is that there'd be a motion, and if there's a second, then we go to discussion.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll just, I'll just say this. So basically, I'm ramping this up, and I'm saying within even as soon, I said within 90 days, but it says as soon as the next meeting, so it would be the 20 or 23rd of this. And so what I'm suggesting is a, is a subcommittee that would report back to the board. And then that, then I'm actually suggesting people, which we, which anybody could be on that board. I'm saying that I want to be on a board or that subcommittee. And then I'm also suggesting the chair and Amy, that we just, and then we take and go, kind of go through. We had four set of criteria that we used the last time, and then we could do some other that part, but just a little bit more vetting and just trying to get some more public participation or whatever in, in the process. And, and so that, that would be, so that would be my, my motion to public hearing and election, basically on the 23rd. So if I had a, a, a motion on that to, to consider that, I would look for that now, and we maybe can have some discussion.
So to understand that you're asking for a subcommittee to report back to the board by the next meeting?
Yeah.
So we would form a subcommittee now and the?
Yeah, and we could, we could even have, we could even have the part of the, yeah, the subcommittee and, and just kind of getting more of the process involved. And then, you know, we've got some candidates here, but they're not, they're not all here. I mean, I don't know if that's the process that they have choice to show up or not, or out of town.
All are here, but one is out of town and sent something for me to read on her behalf.
Okay, so you have everybody here. So, yeah. So I think that um.
Okay, so your motion is to form a subcommittee that reports back by September 23rd?
January 23rd.
I'm sorry. I don't know why I said September. By January 23rd, by our next meeting.
Yeah. So but let me, let me look back here a second and I'll finish as quick as, how many, I mean, how many candidates do we have here that are actually of the, that are here tonight?
Five are here, one sent in a letter, and one with Drew.
Okay, so basically, we have the people here tonight, and as long as they understand the process of this stuff too, because I didn't think we had, I think we had, I was under the understanding that we had more people that were absent.
No.
Okay, so if that not being the case, I mean, I do see that there's some duplication and whatever within this process. So I think I'm just going to, you know, point, make those points that I just did. And I think that whatever happens, if you go back and look at what we did in 2016, I think that was an excellent example. But I want everybody to be treated fairly and justly and think that they, they were engaged in a good process here for tonight. So that's, that's my main concern, the process. So I think with that in mind, I'm going to withdraw a motion.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for your comments. Okay, so I'm now going to begin calling our interested community members to the podium. I'm calling you in alphabetical order, First Paige Bowen, followed by Dr. Ralph Bauer. And Chair Butler will keep the timer going and help you manage your time. You get two minutes to present.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Paige.
Thank you. Good. I'm sorry, that microphone was a lot louder than I was expecting. I'll step back a little bit. So good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Paige Anderson Bowen, and I am standing before you submitting my interest in serving on the school board. So I am invested personally, professionally, as a human, in building and leading equitable public systems that serve all members of the community, all families. Each child, I believe, deserves a public school district that collectively wraps its arms around that student and assures that they have everything they need to be set onto a pathway of lifelong fulfillment and engaged citizenship. I, I really appreciate that as a district, we invest in career building, education, but recognizing that every student has a different way of fulfilling their, their dreams and their ambitions as an adult. My family actually moved to Northfield in 2018 for the community and for this school district. So I am one of those families that came here for this district, but I also see that we are a district that can improve. We always can learn more, right? We're in education. That's what we do. We learn, we grow. So professionally, I work in community health administration, leadership and policy. In that space, my expertise is in strategy, planning, budgeting. I work with government funding, intergovernmental relations. I work at the state level, local, city, county level, deeply embedded in that system and understand how that system works. And, but it was not until I, I spent a, a term as an AmeriCorps volunteer in Spring Creek Elementary that I realized that public education is the only public system that touches every single family in a community. Healthcare families can slip through. Education, we touch every single one. And so if you decide to appoint me tonight to the board or in a later process, I would be honored, I'd be thrilled to serve alongside you and do the best that we can as a collective to serve every single student in the district. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Two minutes. Well done, Corey. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck. Hey, Dr. Ralph Bauer.
I'm going to do something a little bit different. When we were talking in the back, I thought of this, and that is, I'm going to just throw it out and ask if you have any questions of me.
I'm sorry. It's just a listening opportunity. So whatever you could offer us.
Okay. I think, you know, my whole life has been in education. And I've worked in pretty much everything, teaching, administration, educational change. So, you know, that's where my life has been. As far as what I can bring to you, I am open to, you know, however you think you can use me, whether it's on the board or somewhere else. And finally, I think, you know, specific things. With this session coming up, I have worked pretty extensively with a lot of folks in the legislature. Melissa Hortman, who's the majority leader, was our representative when I was in Anoka. One minute, okay? And been involved with several other legislators who are key. One minute, okay. And been involved with several other legislators who are key committees. So that may be a way that I can help you and hopefully, you know, we can move this along. So I thank you for your time and appreciate. Take care.
Thank you so much. Good luck to you. Okay, next we have Robert Coleman and then Dr. Hillman will read Victoria Limkey's letter.
Good evening. Chair Gonzalez George is Vice Chair Butler, Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Hillman. I'm Robert Coleman. I'm a father of two children in the Northfield Public School System. Have a first grader at Spring Creek Elementary and a preschooler in the district's hand-in-hand preschool program. With them in mind, combined with my deep passion for public education, I've been very engaged with our school system for a number of years. During this time, I've had the opportunity to work with staff, community members, district leaders, including many of you. On many district committees and task forces. From five years on the community at Advisory Council, including two terms as chair. Two times spent on the district's communications and legislative action committees. I am well-versed in our district's vision and strategic commitments. Opportunities this past year to participate on task forces to prioritize the district's budget. As well as to help identify current facility needs at the high school. Have given me insight into some of the major issues currently confronting Northfield schools. Because of this history of active engagement and a strong level of understanding of how the district and the Board of Education function. I believe myself well-placed to hit the ground running as a temporary board member. As someone who strives to be a collaborator and consensus builder who listens and respects the voices of all stakeholders. I would be committed to working together with each and every one of you. The necessity of this appointment is truly unfortunate and it is my ardent hope that Mr. Stratman is able to quickly recover and resume his position. Still, if appointed to this temporary role, I would fully commit myself to devoting the time and energy necessary. To properly fulfill the duties of this position. Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck. Next, we'll hear a letter from Victoria Lemke.
Yeah, so I'm reading this on behalf of Victoria Lemke, who is not eligible to be here this evening. So I'm reading her words verbatim. Good evening. I would love to have been there tonight to deliver this myself, but my husband and I have had a long overdue anniversary trip that fell at this same time. Thank you, Matt, for reading this for me in my absence. My name is Victoria Lemke and I am a mother of two children in the Northfield School District. I have interest in the temporary board position for many reasons. I had contemplated running last fall, but had recently made a career change in August and did not want to commit to something I could not give it a hundred percent. I have found myself comfortable in my new position and work from home with much more flexibility. I believe that people need to come together to make decisions that are in the best interest of our children's, students, children, students, staff and community altogether. I believe having more individuals on the board with students actively in the Northfield Schools is important and would love to be considered to fill Noel's position temporarily. I would come to the table with an open mindset with the common goal of doing. This best for the district and most importantly, the staff and the students. I am someone who can be very passionate about what I believe in, but can be respectful toward ideas I may not agree with. And come to find common ground to make decisions. I am not a Northfield native, but I can say that I believe our family has found a great home here. And I look forward to being more involved and committed to my children's future here. Again, I would love to be considered to temporarily fill this board position while Noel is taking care of his health. Thank you for your time this evening and have a great night. So again, I read that on behalf of Victoria Lemke.
Thank you. Hey Rodney Otto.
Thank you. I thought what I would do, you have my statement, but I'm gonna give you some I, some of my thoughts and ideas. And and perhaps give you a better idea of what I might bring to the board. So first, I'm very passionate about education. Was the first in my family to. To go to college. So I've certainly seen the impact of quality education. And I would ask all of us, where would we be without the good teachers to motivate, inspire and challenge us? I hope to bring a more diverse and broader perspective to your discussions. I grew up in Hawaii. Why I'm in Minnesota, that's a whole different story. But I grew up in Hawaii, which is often called the melting pot of the Pacific. Going to college in Iowa further broadened my views and gave me a perspective that could never be replicated if I had stayed home. This does not mean, does not mean that I have the answers, but it has equipped me to consider other views and opinions. I also understand the need for patience and collaboration. The path of our goals are often filled with unexpected curves and detours. From these, we learn the importance of being flexible and persistent. Okay. I have, my, I want to close with this. I want to share with you a quote that I often use. When when I give advice to students and. And I got this from a, the the president of a small college in Texas. And he said. Make your next. Better than your now. Make your next better than your now. I think that is so insightful. That we should all keep, take it to heart. And what I would implore the board. Is that our community, our teachers and our students. Are counting on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And good luck. All right, Emily. Emily Zimmer, welcome.
Hi, hello. Thank you for having me. In my letter of interest, I shared my professional and personal experiences to why I think I'm qualified to do this. Now I will share the how and the why and how I would approach serving the children and communities served by Northfield Public Schools. Moved to Northfield in two thousand and five and fell in love with the area and its community-minded people. Early on, I made it my mission to give back in ways that tap my strengths and passion. I have been fortunate to get to serve our town in a number of great roles. Good governance requires participation of its stakeholders. As a mom of three in the district, I wear that hat as well. One of taxpayer participant in district activities and community member. It feels like the right time to step up to this challenge. Professionally, I feel fortunate to witness the daily impact that education on has has on individual lives and on the community at large. Education is transformative, transformative, and the work you do all matters. My why is that I believe in the power and promise of education and I'm dedicated to continuing to work. To ensure lifelong learning opportunities in our area. As for my approach to serving in this role, over my years of working with government bodies, I've observed some key traits that contribute to healthy constructive. Service, those include clear communication, commitment to outcomes that benefit stakeholders, thoughtful and informed participation. And dedication to fairness and equity. Those tenants would guide my service on the school board. As for my working style, my top Clifton strengths are adaptability and maximizer, so strategic thinking. And continuous improvement are my love languages. I tend to be direct, but collaborative and solutions oriented. My qualifications. And experience would allow me to positively contribute to the board quickly and thoughtfully. That's my why and how in two minutes. And I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Emily. Again, thank you to all of you for stepping up. I will now take nominations. Would you like to make a nomination?
Yeah, I'll, let's see, where was? Lemke, Victoria Lemke.
Okay, Victoria Lemke has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Amy?
I would like to nominate Robert Coleman.
Okay, Robert Coleman has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hey Jenny?
I would like to nominate Rodney Otto.
Any other nomination? Okay Cory?
I'd like to nominate Emily Zimmer.
Okay, Emily Zimmer has also been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no further discussion nomination, hearing no further nominations, nominations to fill the. Temporary vacant seat are now closed. Is there any discussion? I will call on you to make any comments or have any discussion. Anybody like to make a comment? Okay, Amy.
First of all, I want to thank all of you and I hope you all get involved in some way because there's a tremendous amount of talent. That came forward and I'm very excited about it and I would have loved to nominate all of you and I wish we, I I I welcome your. Your running in two years for the board, but in the meantime, we'd love to have you help us in many other ways. That being said, Robert Coleman, I do believe is someone who really could hit the ground running. He has. Actually been attending every board meeting since April, most of them in person, a couple of them online. And he has been very involved in many committees and other work groups for the district over the last. Four, five, six years, I don't know exactly, but I really do believe that. That experience will be very useful to him and I also very much appreciate the fact that he has young children. Which is a group that we don't really have represented on the board at all. So it would be great to have him on the board and I hope you'll all vote for him.
Thank you, Amy. Any other comments or? Jenny?
Dedication and commitment is required for committee work and it seems like we have. A great deal of that within our six candidates here and I think that we're very lucky that these individuals came forward. And so I want to personally thank each and every one of you for taking the time and the energy. To come forward. Another important factor though, is that I know that our community also looks to is qualities. As patience and understanding and being open-minded. Having served a lifetime in the education field, I I would imagine would require a lot of these qualities and and then some. And so I think that Rodney Otto, having been a teacher and working in higher education here. And in other states as well, would be a strong asset to our current board. He also made a statement of his interest in continuing Noel's work and I found that very admirable, especially considering the the situation. I really appreciate how many parents we have now on our our current board. I think it's awesome. But I I would definitely like to see more teachers on our on our school board. Educator, educators or even from the education field. And so I hope that this opportunity to have a retired educator on our school board is not overlooked tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other comments?
Yeah, Jeff? Yeah, I was just gonna comment on, I mean, I don't know a lot of the other candidates, but. Victoria Lemke, I know, I know she's a parent and just has a lot of energy and a lot of interest in in serving, can't be here tonight, obviously. And she, you know, we kind of talked about that. She said, I mean, a long time ago, you know, if you had an opportunity and whatever to put in, I mean, I put in a good word for her. So that's why I'm. One of the reasons I'm supporting Victoria, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Cory?
Just like to thank the great slate of candidates we have in this room. Appreciate everyone's willingness to serve the community. This is kind of a thankless job, as I think some people have learned over the last couple of years. So I appreciate your willingness to stop, step up. And I hope all of you look forward to being involved in some ways. I know some of you alluded to doing so if tonight doesn't go in your favor. I know Emily for a number of years and I think she'd be a tremendous asset to this board. As a parent of three and has served the community in so many ways and think she would be a great addition. So. Again, thank you to all five of you in this room for being here. Thank you.
Did you want to make an additional?
Yeah, I wanted to make an additional comment. I wanted to thank everybody for showing up. So that, want to make sure we get that in the.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else comment? Okay, so yes, I also join the board members and Dr. Hillman and thanking all of you for applying or. I'm just incredibly humbled and blown away by the quality candidates that showed up and and applied. And yeah, I hope to see you involved, as I said before, in our district in some way. Okay, seeing no further discussion or comments, we are now going to move on to a roll call vote. Anita will be facilitating that roll call vote and it will be conducted in the order that we received nominations. So. First, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Okay, so the first nominee is Victoria Lemke.
Butler?
No.
Gerwitz?
Nay.
Gonzalez George?
Nay.
Miller?
Nay.
Nelson?
Nay.
Quinell?
Yes.
Okay, Victoria Lemke did not receive a majority of the votes, but we will consider the next nominee. The next nominee is Robert Coleman.
Butler?
Yay.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Nay.
Quinell?
Nay.
Okay, Robert received four out of the six votes and so he will be appointed. That completes the process. So we will not be voting on any other of the nominees. Thank you to everyone again. Congratulations to Robert Coleman. Please step forward to front of the podium. You will be asked by Anita to sign some documents and I will administer the. Ceremonial oath of office. All right. Will you step in front of the podium, Robert? Thank you. It is an honor to be elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office. You assume a tremendous responsibility along with other members of the school board for an equitable and quality education for every student in the Northfield School District. In carrying out this responsibility, you'll be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, accountability and advocacy in providing vision. The board formulates the educational goals and sets the course for Northfield Public Schools. As a board, we are accountable to the community and must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our students. As board members, we also serve as key advocates on behalf of our students and community. We must strive together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district towards fulfilling our vision to prepare every student. For lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in society. Having signed the acceptance of the oath of office, you will now publicly affirm your commitment by acknowledging. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I swear, I will support. The Constitution of the United States of America. And the state of Minnesota. And then I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the office of school board member. Of independent school district six fifty nine. To the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you, Robert. Congratulations, Director Cole. Have a seat with us, please. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Hillman, for all your work and helping prepare us to make this important and also sober decision. Yes, we're definitely thinking about Noel at this time.
Absolutely. I want to thank the School Boards Association for helping counsel us on the appropriate procedures and so. MSBA is just such a great backbone organization to help us make sure that we're following the appropriate protocol. So we thank. Greg Abbott and Terry Morrow, who gave us some great counsel during the process.
And thank you again, Jeff, for your comments and for everyone's nomination and their comments on their nominee. Okay, we are on to item eight. Items for information, there is an enrollment report and Dr. Hillman will review the January twenty twenty three enrollment report. And the report is included in the table file.
We have the enrollment report in the table file and I do want to just share a couple of items from, uh, from that enrollment report. Give me just one moment. I had some notes that are in my download and. Okay, we, what you're going to notice is that, uh, you're going to notice that we had a drop in students just from December. And I wanted to share a couple of different items with you for that. So if you could just give me one more second here, I appreciate it. There we go. Thank you for your patience. So I want you to point out, the bottom line is that you'll see at the bottom, we went from 3742 students in the December enrollment report to this 3723 in this latest enrollment report. The reason I'm pointing this out is that this is the first time this year that we are, uh, the number of students in the enrollment report is less than what we've had projected. And so we are now, uh, for this month. Now, remember, it's a long year, right? But we're four students behind what was projected. That's an important piece for our funding mechanism. Uh, in doing a dive into that and the reasons why those things were, why we saw a number of students, what, go to the, go to Chris Nessad or SIS Person Student Information System individual and ask. So let's just do a little bit of a deeper dive. So there's several reasons that I want to share with you for that drop of 19 students from last month to this month. And when you put them all together, they're logical. So number one, we actually did have some data cleanup. We did have some students who were enrolled but not attending and they were still on our enrollment rolls. So we need to take them off to make sure that we're not getting the funding for those students. So sometimes that's not always readily apparent right away. And so as the year goes on, we learn some of those things and we clean that up. We do have some students who have moved out of the district. A couple of families, if you, one family that moves, you get several students that can leave. And in some cases, it was where a student went to live with a, a different parent. And so their family stayed here, but they moved to, uh, with a different parent. We also had reasons like students who were leaving to attend treatment. We had some students, a student who moved out of the country. You heard our partnership with Arcadia and Prairie Creek before. And we did have some students that have gone to Arcadia for the second semester. We did have some students, if a student does not attend for 15 consecutive days required by law to drop them from our roles. So in some cases, that was the component. And then what we also see the second semester of every year and it appears this year we have a few more students is the initial anecdotal analysis. Many professors from St. Olafand or Carlton may do a semester abroad. So they may be a visiting professor to someplace outside the country and they take their students with them. And so my understanding is we have a few of those this time around where we, we don't always have multiple impact by that. So just because this was a little bit of a larger number drop than what we typically see in an enrollment report, I just wanted to make sure I did a little bit more detailed of an explanation of that. So that is the enrollment report. Thank you for your patience as I dug up that piece there.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make any comments about portage at this time?
Uh, I did not have anything to make comments about portage.
Any questions on the enrollment report or comments? Yes, Amy?
So I have two questions for you, Dr. Hillman. The first question is this idea of registered but not attending. Now, have these people been registered the whole school year and just coming off now? And why is there that delay? So that's.
I don't know the answer to that. Again, I got the report late this afternoon. So we'll do a little bit more digging for you on that one.
Okay. Then my second question is about the professors taking their kids away for semester abroad, because to me, portage is the perfect solution for their kids. And I'm wondering if any of them jumped into portage or if there's any way of connecting with their colleges because we partner with them and finding out who, what professors are going off and sending them a message saying, hey, put your kids in portage while you're gone for the semester, so.
So it's interesting that you raised that because we have had professors over the years ask before portage if students could continue remotely. And it was not an option right at that time. I think that many people know the portage option in our system at this point. And if we did have students who had moved to portage, they wouldn't be a, a, a loss on the enrollment sheet, right? Because that would be a within the district transfer. So you wouldn't have lost them off of the enrollment report. I do think in talking, you know, with some folks who do international assignments, there is a desire from time to time to have their children, you know, attend a school in the country that they are going to for a period of time for that international experience. You know, not quite an exchange program, but for something similar. So I'm speculating there, that's a general, I don't have that from any of these specific folks. But you're right, portage would be a great option for those students to be able to continue with us. Now, there'd be a question of whether or not we'd actually be able to collect the funding for those students. Because when they do change their address, if they're not living within the district anymore, we would not be able to claim them, right, during that time. Of course, if we have a student who we know was coming back, we had most likely worked that up. But just to be clear, depending on how they handle their residence address, it's possible that those students would not be eligible in terms of being in district folks. That would, we'd have to look into that. But just, we've had that one, we've had some students who have went out of state, they've moved and they loved portage and they wanted to continue. And unfortunately, we were not able to continue that because they're not eligible, because they're not a Minnesota resident. We could take them, we just wouldn't get any money for them.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the enrollment report? Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Okay, the next item for information is a board workshop. The board will hold a workshop on Saturday, February 4th, 2023, from nine to noon in the Northfield District Office Boardroom. Next item, future meetings. Those will be held here at the District Office Boardroom on a Monday, January 23rd, 6:00 PM. That's a regular meeting, as mentioned, the Saturday workshop, nine to noon, February 4th. Monday, February 13th, also, also a regular board meeting, 6:00 PM held in this space. And Monday, February 27th, 2023, 6:00 PM, also a regular board meeting held in this space. That is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Jeff, is there a second? Move by Ben, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.